Off with a discussion about TIF. Just to kind of help set the scene, I kind of put a little bit of data together from, we don't actually have unfortunately to try to summarize everything. Each policy or each program and project was kind of separate and that was kind of trying to find out terms etc. to try and find commonality was difficult. But what was able to do, if you can just move to the next slide, was just to kind of look at what TIF projects have been authorized by the city. And in total, there's been forty-five projects, six of which are currently open. Two were not certified, so that means that basically they never went forward.
They just haven't gone forward yet.
Or they haven't gone forward yet. But one of them for sure won't go forward. It was the apartment building in the ShopCo parking lot. And then thirty-seven of them have been decertified, which means that they've been completed. And are now obviously on the tax roll. In the early years, a lot of them were issued by the Port Authority. So the Port Authority has issued nineteen of them, and then the city subsequently has issued a further twenty-six.
What is definition of early years?
When it's early years, when the first one started.
Right, but what timeframe are we looking? Okay, okay.
Ninety maybe?
Yeah.
Eight to one hundred, right.
Pre-May.
Okay.
And then, and then just to try to break it out into kind of like what, what programs or, you know, what businesses were supported, thirty-nine of those were kind of in industrial and commercial. Four of them were either a hotel or senior living, and six of them are two apartment buildings. And the reason that it doesn't add up to forty-five is that in some of the areas, there was TIF districts where there was multiple businesses incorporated within that TIF district that got it. So that was just, you know, a little background that I don't think people kind of see or know. Then, the next slide is really, you know, we, we obviously want to draft a TIF policy to aid us going forward in terms of, you know, defining, you know, something that the council is basically, has got an appetite for. And a couple of questions, I think, that, you know, we need to kind of answer and, you know, determine and come up with some parameters around is, is, you know, do we, do we set a maximum time period? And there's statutory limits on the three most used district types, which is economic development, housing, and redevelopment. And obviously, economic development is up to eight years, housing up to twenty-five, redevelopment up to twenty-five. And so, you know, it's at some point in time, you know, tonight, hopefully, we can get some appetite as to what people want. Are we going to go up to twenty-five years on housing? Are we going to go up to twenty-five years? Are we going to go up to the, obviously, the eight years? And if so, like, let's state what that maximum should be. And what are we prepared to, you know, prepared to kind of fund? Is it going to be tied to the overall investment? You know, are we going to link it to full-time equivalent employees? You know, are we going to tie it to a number of housing units? You know, we need to look at kind of the administration fees. I mean, there's such suggesting in here that we're going to kind of do $2,000 for the application and fifteen thousand escrow deposit. Administration fees can't be any more than ten percent of the estimated TIF expenditure. And then, I know in some cases, we've, we've also allowed TIF on the interest. For example, the tower apartments. You know, that was not only, that wasn't just the cost of the, you know, portion that we, we funded, but also the interest on it was allowable as well. And that's something, again, that we should probably, you know, identify, are we going to include that, or are we not going to include it? So that when somebody comes to the city, you know, we've got a blue sheet that says, this is what, you know, these are the rules of engagement, you know, this is what the council will approve. If you want, doesn't mean to say they couldn't necessarily ask for something different, but if somebody's coming to the podium and they've met that criteria that's in the TIF policy, then, then it's a slam dunk that, like, we're going to approve it. And I think that would be easier on, it's easier on the staff that are going to obviously work with whoever it is, and it's easier on the council, and it, it saves us any kind of public, public kind of, you know, bad press that we didn't approve a TIF. If it's, if it meets the criteria that we've stated in our policy, then we know we're going to pass it. Obviously, if they ask for something different outside of that, then they can expect, obviously, that there's going to be some discussion about it. So with that, maybe somebody would like to kick it off, and, and I don't know if anybody else has got anything. Obviously, the packet that went out obviously included the draft of the policy and the company memo. I don't think we need to kind of go over, you know, the definitions of blight etc., but I think it's more about putting some, something in place that, you know, has words associated with it. That's a roadmap for somebody coming to the city asking for TIF.
Can I, quick question. So on your previous slide, it had economic development, maximum of eight years. Can I just get, like, an idea of what that would be? What would be an economic development TIF?
That would be helpful, because I was wondering difference between that and redevelopment of twenty-five. Like, to me, they kind of could be the same.
Would one of you two care to try to answer that?
And if we don't know, that's okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I do have an answer. Economic development TIF, permitted uses of increment for that kind of district is typically, and you can have some fluidity in, in how you can use it, but typically, it's manufacturing, warehousing, R&amp;D facilities, telemarketing, tourism in qualifying counties, which I do not believe is otter tail, commercial developments in small cities, and workforce housing outside the seven-county metro area.
Thank you. That's helpful.
And then redevelopment?
Oh, yeah, sure. Redevelopment is the correction of conditions justifying creating the district, so addressing blight.
So have you got a couple of examples?
For economic development TIF, we have not used that since I've been with the city, but it would be, like, imagine, yeah, sure.
Aurora would have been a good one.
Yeah, Aura Fabricators, they're a manufacturing firm. They utilized TIF to expand their footprint here in Fergus Falls. And then with the redevelopment TIF, we've used a couple of those most recently. The Mill Hotel is a redevelopment TIF district, and then the former Checker site is a redevelopment district.
One other question. When you said outside the seven-county metro for the economic development, which has the eight-year limit, workforce housing, so when we've done workforce housing, we have done the longer term, because we have some that are pretty long for workforce housing.
So the, the only times that we've anticipated funding some kind of a workforce housing project since I've been with the city, we've actually been leaning on redevelopment TIF, which we've done for a couple of different reasons. One is because it does not actually require any kind of caps on income, so the workforce housing could truly be market rate.
Okay.
If there are workforce housing projects on our, our projects list, it would have been a while back, and it's possible that things could have changed since then at the legislative level, I'm not, I'm not sure.
I think the other ones were done under, yeah, the street housing district.
Yeah. Yeah, to my knowledge, we have not utilized economic development TIF for workforce housing, but it is an option, seeing as we are outside the seven metro area.
Why, why the big difference between eight and twenty-five?
I'm not sure. I don't know. There might be, there might be legislative, they do, so they do like a legislative report. I don't know if it's annually, or it's, it's fairly regularly, they do kind of like deep dives into TIF. There might be something in there that explains the time limits, but those are simply the ones that are given in statute.
Because they said so, that's why.
And it's possible that, like, if you're thinking about a redevelopment district, you're certifying a certain level, because you're redeveloping a site, right? So something already exists there, or it's an existing area, so you have something on the tax rolls, and then you're building from there. Whereas perhaps with economic development TIF, you're going from a, a green site, where you've got, you know, little to no taxes coming in on it, and then you've got bam, a brand-new building. So maybe you're hitting that increment faster, and that's a potential reason for the shorter term.
Is there a minimum term too, or is there, is that completely, as long as it doesn't exceed that number, it's fine?
I am not aware of a minimum term. There is a five-year rule related to TIF projects, where you, the developer has five years to ensure that they're meeting the benchmarks that are placed by the city and by statute. If at the end of that five, Bill, am I right about this?
You are, I think.
Yeah.
Is it the five-year to start their project?
Something like that.
And if they don't, then it, the TIF district will go away if they haven't acted within it, I think, but I can't hold for sure.
But you could probably set something different in an agreement with a specific developer.
Can I ask a question on the interest part? I was unaware that, I guess, we had included TIF on interest. Has that been a one-time thing, or has that been a practice?
Several, over the years.
Several, okay.
Actually, it's more often we've included interest, I, I believe, and this is, I'd have to pull the actual agreements, but a few of them have been principal only. It kind of depends on the agreement and the redevelopment that was happening. But the interest on it was because of, you know, if you're financing X project and it's pay-as-you-go, so that developer needs to finance it and pay their own interest, that's how the interest got built in.
Okay.
So otherwise, yeah, a few of them were done principal only, but I wasn't on the negotiation side of it, just the making the payments.
And it can be a negotiation tool.
I just think that we need to, from the previous conversations we've had with the council, I think we, you know, we talked about the business part of it, you know, or the economic part of it, and then we go to the housing. And the housing ones are the ones that are the hiccups, and that's what the council, I believe. So we should probably start with the economic, with the manufacturer, whatever the, I can't, I wanted to go back to that list. Can you do that, Lynn?
It was economic development, housing and redevelopment.
Right.
So, yeah, so that, oh.
Next one.
Too bad. There you go. Economic development and up to eight years. So I think that one, we're all pretty much agreement on, because that's a job creator one, more than likely. But the housing and the, and the redevelopment one, that's kind of where we had that hiccup with the Herzog property. So we should kind of walk through that one a little bit more, and get some more things on the table about that, I think. I think that's where we're going to be to our, our holdup. I mean, TIF is, you know, when you mentioned TIF, some people go crazy, and some people don't, they like it. I'm one that don't like it, but you have to have it, I believe, so.
So, I mean, on economic development, it says up to eight years. Basically, is the consensus that we're happy to go to eight years?
Yeah, for manufacturing.
What are some, what are the others doing in the area? What is?
Is this, is this a recommendation from the state, or is this our, this is ours?
No, this is the state maximum you can do.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that's a statute, okay. I just wanted to make sure that. I knew the twenty-five years on housing was, but I wasn't sure about that eight-year.
Your Honor?
Bill?
One other thing, I know, for example, when we put in a TIF district, it will always have the maximum years, like, in the TIF plan, because that's by law, and then in the development agreement, you scale that back. That's where the mechanics of scaling it back, you know, down to X years or something.
So that's the part you negotiate with the person where, when we file the TIF district, it's the max? Is that basically? Okay.
How did it go for twenty-seven years for that project that was going to be down at Checkers? How did that happen?
Was it twenty-seven?
Twenty.
I think it was.
There is something in the law about it's X years from receipt of first increment. So it could be here, the district starts here, you receive increment two years later, and then it goes, I believe, but it's from first, receipt of first increment.
The time clock starts from the first increment.
So it's not necessarily they're getting a twenty-seven-year break?
You likely see a duration of more like nine or 10 years. But technically, the increments only be collected for eight.
So it's a period of actual collection, as opposed to not necessarily, because as you say, if they've got up to five years to start the project, theoretically, it could be almost thirty years.
Probably.
Yeah, that it sits on the box.
And ties up.
Yep, yep, because they didn't start. But, so, I mean, that's something, then, as you say, from a developer, development agreement, then, you know, is that something we also want to put in the policy, that, you know, it needs to start within twenty-four months of kind of, so that, as you say, that would mean the eight-year one is, you know, technically ten, and the twenty-five-year one is no more than twenty-seven?
If we go, if we allow those amounts.
Yeah.
If we don't set our max, a different number.
Well, you know, Alexandria, in October, they only did a thirteen-year TIF agreement. So.
Housing?
Yep, redevelopment housing. And I know prior to that, they were doing longer term, but they, you know, October, I saw that one come through, they had only done thirteen years, and it was just shy of a million, so.
But, I mean, you can set the years, anything less than that.
Right.
I mean, you don't, you can't go more.
That's the max, the twenty-five is the max.
Right, so I mean, as it, as we're sitting here, is there a max that somebody has in mind that they're willing to look at regarding housing?
I don't know that I have a number in mind, but I guess my thoughts would be the longer TIF. We, we need to attribute more TIF to job creation, investment in, in things that are more our economic businesses that are going to have jobs. Right, exactly. And so, I don't know that I have a number in mind, but to me, we need to put more of our money and our ability to do this in that pile.
So, I mean, well.
I think it should be less than twenty-five.
Yeah, I do too.
So, just to kind of like, so we can check off kind of like economic development, we're happy to leave that at eight years?
Yeah.
Yes, I am in agreement with eight years for economic development.
What did you say, Alec, was on the housing, thirteen?
Well, they did.
That was in October.
That was, but they've gone from everything, I'm sure. So, so everybody's happy on economic development, so let's go to housing now.
On the housing piece, and I don't know how to do it in the policy, but to me, it also depends on the project. If we're looking at one apartment building with twenty units versus someone that wants to come in and put up four, or a condo, to me, the breadth of the project and how much it's going to bring to town should be considered, but I don't know how to write that necessarily off the cuff.
Scott?
I don't know that the purpose is to try and answer everything ahead of time. And if somebody wanted to come in and ask for twenty-five years on a housing project, for example, they could. But I think as Mayor Hicks was saying at the beginning, if we set a number and say, this is what will almost certainly get approved, well, then, they can start there.
Yep.
And so, in order to just throw something on the table, so we've got, as I looked at the many examples that we had, you've recommended or referred to a thirteen year.
For Alexandria.
In Alexandria, there were others that were fourteen years, fifteen years. But what did we say, fifteen years? And start there.
I was kind of, I was thinking, that's fifteen.
Hard set on, but, I mean, I think that's a reasonable place to start for what it's worth.
My feeling is, why start high, Lynn? I would start twelve. You can always, because if it's going to be, you know, if somebody comes in and says, hey, yeah, we'll do that for twelve, why would you give it to them for fifteen? I mean, you can always give it to them for fifteen, if you want to.
Well, no matter what we want, we'll probably ask for twenty-six, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. But if somebody comes in with no strings attached, that we're going to make this really simple, you can have TIF for twelve years, and no questions asked, you can start your project tomorrow, and they take it, you just save, we just save the taxpayers some money. You know, why wouldn't we start at fifteen, or sixteen, or eighteen? And then they, they either take it, and we just lost five years, if it's eighteen, you know, or six years, and then they say, well, no, we want twenty. You know, that's what I don't, I would go on the low side of it, and always be able to go up.
Would we be able to attach a number of units if we're going to say, like, a, a twelve-year, and that's this number of units? Anything above the certain number of units is open to?
A longer term.
Like, a longer term?
I, I would just make it really basic. Hey, you got twelve, twelve years, no matter what it is, and then, you know, the rest can be voted on, up to X amount of years, but I, I don't think I'd give it away right away, especially if you're housing.
Your Honor, question?
Yep.
Clara, how much housing, or how much TIF questions are you getting on housing? And if so, not that we can base it on, like, the most recent phone call you've gotten, but what are people looking for when they look at Fergus Falls for housing development? What, what are you hearing?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Counselor Kilde. I, I do get calls, not weekly, but every month, every couple months about, from housing developers in particular, who are looking at different areas in Fergus Falls, and the first question, well, the first question they ask is zoning. And then the second question they ask is, does your city give TIF? And I say, we do have, you know, we do make TIF available, here's the process for TIF, and they'll either come back to us or, or not. They don't usually get into further specifics. Something I think that we should keep in mind as we're considering, you know, how to set limits or where to set limits, is we go through a, a process with Baker Tillys, who we have been using as our municipal advisor, and they do, like, essentially a cost rundown of the project itself. They work with the developer to come up with numbers, and then, a lot of times, the, the TIF increment that is able to be raised is what's matching a lot of the project costs. So a lot of times, that, that duration, in order for them to meet all of the, the project costs that would be TIF-eligible, that's why you're seeing longer timelines, because projects are just so expensive. So I, I would maybe want to leave a little bit of flexibility when you are looking at time limits to ensure, like, if it is a, a project with a larger footprint, say, you know, a forty-plus apartment complex, like we might have seen on the Checker site, they, they were asking for the full twenty-five years because their development costs could bear that out, based on what we were seeing from, from Baker Tilly. So just depending on where costs are, you might have longer time, timelines based on that, if you're looking at it holistically.
And you're not, not only cost, but what the, what the income off the apartments are, that's already set, that they know it's eleven-hundred, twelve-hundred per unit. They know when they process that out, how much they're at the end of the day, and they want to be in that four-to-seven percent profit margins, where they want to be, and without TIF, they can't get that, especially in town, because our, we have one of the cheaper rental rates in the, in this area, you know, probably seventy-five miles. You know, we went through that here with the Greater Fergus Falls, they showed us this whole presentation. It just comes down to four-to-seven percent profit for them.
Yeah, part of it is almost a philosophical question of, are you using TIF as a, simply a financing tool, or simply, like, filling a gap, or are you using it as incentive for economic development? Because it can be used both ways. But I think, though, the way that you're approaching it kind of comes down to that fundamental question of, what are you seeing the use of TIF as? Is it a, an incentive tool, or is it simply a, we know you've got a project, fine, we recognize there is a gap, and we'll give you this? And maybe it's project by project, but I think that's, that's something that should also be discussed, is the, is the, the way that you're philosophically approaching tax increment financing.
Mike?
Well, I appreciate it, Your Honor. I didn't know you caught me pulling my mic down. I apologize for my tardiness here today, so I might be repetitive in what, what I'm looking at. I'm not a big supporter of housing for TIF. In fact, I'm probably the lowest supporter of it. And when I look at timeframes, I look at five, ten, and fifteen years. I don't think I can get behind anything that's over fifteen years when it comes to TIF. One of the reasons that I'm one of the lowest supporters of housing is, when I look at TIF, I look at three different things that need to kind of satisfy my criteria. One, are we going to generate property taxes from that piece of property when it's completed? If the answer is yes, that's number one. Two, are we going to generate an extra sales tax increase from that property being taken with TIF? That would usually mean some type of retail, some type of other thing that's connected with it. And three, does that property serve the whole community? That's a real question I have. And when I look to housing, I just don't see that. I see the property tax increase over the long haul, but I'm missing the sales tax increase if they don't have commercial, and I'm missing the, the whole community benefiting from it. One of the reasons I have trouble also with the housing is the housing is similar to other businesses that, that I'm involved in. The individual knows the margins of what it takes to do the project, and they know what their rent income needs to be to do that project. I think housing over the years has just gotten, gotten kind of fat in the saddle with it, and I'm not a big supporter of it. It would have to be very, very good for me to do it, and have to have economic development hooked to it. So for Mrs. Beck's question, I'm more about using this as an economic development wing than using it as gap financing for housing at this point. And I appreciate Mrs. Beck and her explanation of what she had.
Scott?
To go back to the number of years, then, on the one hand, if it's a short number of years, it's probably good for the city to limit our exposure, so to speak, to make it as good for us as possible right off the bat, so that we don't have anybody getting more than what we'd want to give them. But on the other hand, it might rule off any, rule out any potential interest right before they even come in the door. You know, there might be somebody looking to do a project, but if they see that, oh, they're only going to give me twelve years, I'm going to go someplace else. And so we might not even know what we did not receive, you know, as far as an offer. We wouldn't even get to negotiate, perhaps, if we don't have a more, more room to negotiate. And by having a higher number, we might see more interest, and then you negotiate from there. But if you start with a low number, you might not even, might not even know what you didn't have.
I thought I was coming across the table, because I thought twelve was generous. I mean, I, I agree with no TIF for housing also, and I thought I was going to kind of extend a olive branch here, and say twelve would be a great deal. And, but I, I don't, I wouldn't look at any more than that, because you can always raise it if you had to. And I'm, I'm just, you know, the twenty-seven-year TIF that that one was, was just, like, blew me away.
But by comparison, the things that we were offered, you know, this last one that was referred to earlier for thirteen years, but Alex actually has a twenty-six-year window, and they negotiated it to thirteen years. So perhaps they wouldn't have made that deal if they'd have started it, and I don't know.
Mark?
I don't know where to begin. To reference the last comments from my gentleman to the left with a long TIF, the last project that we gave twenty-six or twenty-seven years didn't come to Fergus. I also agree with the gentleman at the other end of the council table. I don't believe housing and TIF go together. TIF has been overused, affordable housing's been overused by the state of Minnesota because we want affordable housing. No one's defined to me what affordable housing is today. Affordable housing, do we want to grow apartments and no industry? Let's be frank, many times, that affordable housing doesn't bring in employed, and sometimes gets a higher, please, if you will, attention. So I think the definition of TIF needs to really be designed to, what do we want Fergus to be? Do we want it to be more industry and business, or do we want it to be housing? Now, the last couple additions to our city that came to us at the last meeting did not ask for TIF. Neither one of those parties. I don't believe the gentleman who makes the new motel came to us for TIF. And I don't think there was any economic development from anybody that brought them here. They did it themselves. True capitalism. Let the money go where it's easy. Just cut out all the, the speed bumps in doing business in Fergus Falls. High taxes, fees, blah, 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 so, thank you.
Mark, you mean the last hotel we're talking about, the one on, on the interstate? The two, the?
The two, the... Okay, not the one right here. See, you got...
Not the mill.
The mill got 20 years.
They got a TIF?
20 years. The mill did.
TIF in the street.
Yeah, I think it was 20-some years.
I apologize. Was I in the council then, or...
No, 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 just before.
Phew, I thought I was losing it.
Question.
But, and then, coming back, so, but likewise, I mean, if you do kind of housing, or redevelopment housing, I mean, that's something you could put in, that, you know, it's not, you know, that we're not going to fund something that has the criteria of affordable housing, you know, that you have to have X percentage of the units, you know, rented at market rate. You know, you can make them all market rate, so that, you know, they're a real rent, as opposed to a subsidized rent.
Your Honor?
Yep.
Could we do a redevelopment housing parameter? To me, if it is a blighted building, like the mill, or something like that, that's an historic structure, that we, as a city, would like to see reused, I could see a higher upward threshold for that, personally. I agree, I'm okay with looking at different numbers for sizes. I do think that Mr. Layton has a point, and we don't want to have a policy that just automatically gives TIF as it's available, because there are some people that don't need it, and I know it needs to pass the but-if test, but we don't want to make it seem like you just automatically get it for coming to town. I think that's logical. I do want to also say, the staff has worked really hard on those businesses that have come to town, so we need to be aware that, just because we haven't had an economic development person, that behind the scenes, there's been a lot of work for those businesses that are coming to town, and we need to make sure that we're not minimizing that work.
Mike?
Your Honor, I appreciate it, and I appreciate Councilmember Kildee. One of the things that we're looking at, we're talking about the mill, that's not a housing, in my opinion, that's more of a redevelopment, economic development type of situation there. I think Mrs. Beck really hit the nail on the head here, and I think if we start right here, does this council want to use TIF as gap financing? That's where the housing comes in, that, hey, the developer does not have the amount to do housing, or are we really going to use TIF for that economic development wing? And they're really two different philosophies in my mind, two different avenues, and I think, once that council realizes that, or they come to that, that's the only way to move forward. Otherwise, I think the arm that doesn't want the housing, there's no number, 5 years, 10, 26, that'll make us happy. And I think the other side, if they want that as housing, they're looking at that gap financing, like Mr. Councilmember Kwame says, where, hey, they might not have done it if we didn't do that. We have to determine that. That's our really, that's the real work for you, Mayor, I think, is what are we? Which one are we? And I think that'll say a lot about where we go. It will.
I mean, because essentially, what, basically, you know, obviously, we've got two, two kind of like, you know, we've got suggestions of kind of, you know, putting a number in there, and maybe it's a, you know, equally, do you make it a dollar amount, that you're not, you're only prepared to give XX in this program?
Your Honor, I talked to some people earlier today about this, and, excuse me, if we look at that last TIF for the apartment complex at Checkers, I was jealous of that man's business plan. He was going to borrow about $3 million and end up with about a $14 million asset sitting there, with all the grants and TIF that he received. What a business plan. If I were a young man, I'd be all over it. But he still didn't come here. I agree with Mr. Mortensen, this is not a housing project, and it's going to be difficult with the economic development in this economy, to bring in industry here. The more I read and see that industries are cutting back, I think we should still continue with our economic development plan in our department, and establish the foundation, so that we're hitting the ground when that person's hired. But back to TIF, the second part about it, if this council does choose to go with a TIF for housing, man, I want to make it clear that that cannot be sold. If that property is sold in one year, or five years, or 10 years, it does not follow the property. Thank you.
Can you write that in on our bill?
What?
Can you put a proviso in there?
I don't know if you can.
We'd have to check whether that's permissible.
Is it, because we had to approve the last one? So, in essence, if it's transferable, it has to come back to us.
Right. Yeah, I guess that's true. It'll come before you for assignment.
Yeah.
But I think what Mr. Layton's looking for, there's no transferable.
Yeah, I think, yeah, what Mark was saying was that, in the contract that they write, if you sell the property, it's dead at that point.
Do we have some concern, though? I mean, honestly, if we give somebody, if I were to enter a business stake, which I'm not going to, and ask for 25 years of TIF, that could, and honest, right now, be 30 years, is what we're learning today, in essence, because of the start time situation, I may not be alive in 30 years. I mean, like, at some point, people need to be able to take risk with a business that's reasonable risk, and by saying non-transferable, I have no problem with us approving it, but to just say non-transferable, that's asking for people to do a lot, even if we're not looking at housing, if we're just looking at economic development, that's a big ask of people.
So, my question is, if somebody brings jobs of 25 people in here, we give them TIF, and 10 years on the road, he gets sick, or she gets sick, has to sell, we will say no to that? Is that what we're kind of saying on that?
I think...
Just housing only?
I was focused on housing.
So, it's really, that's really kind of, you know...
Yeah, I think, I don't think there's, I don't think there's any kind of question about, you know, any business kind of redevelopment, or business economic development. I think the council's on one page when it comes to that, that those programs would go. I think the only, you know, crux is housing, and what's the consensus of, we've got basically, you know, three that don't want to basically fund anything on housing, and then, you know, we've got, obviously, some that have spoke up about, you know, anywhere from, you know, 15 years, around 15 years on housing. But I think, you know, if we're going to, you know, going to have an economic development person on staff, it would be just easier for them to have some sort of guideline as to what this council is prepared to approve. Because they don't want to go to all the work of getting somebody to the point, and then, all of a sudden, you know, you come in front of the council, and then the council says, well, I'm not going to do it, because that gives us a bad face, you know, we'd be better off...
We have a real definite checklist, that, hey, you're going to fly right through this.
Yep. I mean, that's, I mean, that's, to my mind, as you say, if we say it's 12 years, and somebody comes in and asks for 11 years, and, you know, they've checked the boxes, then it's, we're rubber stamping it, you know, it met the criteria, we move on. If they come back and say, well, you know, I'm looking for a variance, like, 12 years doesn't cut it, I want 20 years, then they're going to be subject to scrutiny and questioning then, as to, how do you justify, and why should we give greater than what's in the checklist of 12?
I think there's a...
Or whatever number.
There's a value to having a policy. So, I respect that there are some that don't want to do any, and I do respect that. So, I was comfortable with the 15, I liked the stepped approach to how many units. What if respecting where Mr. Kremeyer Al raised was the 12? What if we did 12 for up to 50 units, or under 50 units, and 15 for above 50? Or whatever that arbitrary number is, that, I don't know what, how many units our average apartment buildings are, I don't know that. But what if we had a step between 12 and 15?
I mean, the last one was kind of, the Checkers one was kind of a 60-unit, the Sunset ones were 105, but, I mean, but we've got people that have built eight plexes, too, you know, so, I mean, yeah.
And I guess I would be towards market-rate housing.
Yeah.
You know, I'm open to anything and discussing anything, but just from basic, what I consider basic business knowledge, the bigger you're going to build, the more financially sound you are.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're, if someone's going to take a risk and do a fourplex, and it's the first one they've ever bought, first time they're getting into it, they do not have the funds of somebody going to do a 200, 300 complex deal.
No, that's...
And so, to actually give more time, and more things to more apartments, kind of goes, I understand the theory, but it goes a little bit against the need for it. And there still has to be, even if housing comes into this, the but-for test, the but-for test. And if we run into somebody that has a balance sheet of $50 million in their unit, and they're looking to build something in this city, and we are bound to a 12-year with them, and they have that, that's questionable for me. So, the only thing that I can say that I can't believe them even saying it, is we went from a 26-year deal down to a 12 or 15, and that's exciting for me, I guess, at this point.
On the other hand, we had 26 years for how many years, and we've had one apartment built in the last 10, 12 years ago?
Yeah.
And nobody's even, yeah, but nobody's even come to ask us. So, if you want economic development, and that's, and when you do an economic director, we're going to have, they're not going to be doing housing, they're going to do economic development, we know that.
Yeah.
And just as a reminder, sorry...
Uh, I'm sorry, but you know, just let me finish. If you got, somebody wants to bring 50 or 100 jobs to town, and there's no housing, they're not going to come to town, because there's no housing. See, it's, I, it's, you got to play both sides of the fence, don't like doing that. But if you want industry to go up for more jobs, to bring people to town, you got to someplace to put them.
I appreciate that opinion, but how many apartments do we have open, and how many houses we have sale?
I think we're down like, less than 3%, or, we're below the state average.
How many doors? Let's talk reality.
I don't know, I don't know that, but I just know it's less, it's less than state average.
Yeah, there's, I know there's 40, 50 homes for sale, I don't know how many apartments that we should have Mr. Herschel come in and give us a broad spectrum.
Yeah.
I don't want to build another bridge, hoping that industry comes here.
Right.
So, just as a reminder, in every TIF agreement that I've seen while working with the city, it's, you're not bound necessarily to the years that are in it, it's when you reach the increment. So, you could have a district that exists for, you know, 25 years, but if you hit the increment level that you've agreed to in this document with the developer, you may decertify the TIF district at that point. You could continue to gain increment that could then be used for other projects, potentially in a similar, the same district. But if you reach the increment level, and it's before that year time, the years that have been set in the agreement, you may still decertify at that point. Bill, I am right about that, right?
Yeah, you have to, if you met that obligation, then it's the earlier...
Because it's a number that's in there.
How frequent has that happened?
Not super frequent. I can't.
And are we talking, it's a year early, or...
Well, like, more fabricators, they were done.
Yeah, they were done earlier. That was a really good example, how it was built, created an increment, it paid off early. I don't know how many years early, if it was a couple years early, but again, it was a shorter district, anyway. But, yeah, but they recall on other ones, off the top of my head.
Your Honor, one more thing.
Yes, Jim.
Yeah, please.
I think what we're looking for here is to give whoever we hire an outline of what they can offer, and I think that's great, because we did, back a long time ago, have somebody working in economic development that was offering, at times, more than what we had approved, and there was some problems there. So, I mean, we need, we need some guidelines for whoever we're hiring, so that when they go out to work with these people, they know where they can go. And if they need to go more than that, then they need to come back to us. But at this point, we need guidelines for them, so they know, they know what's available.
And I think that that's true, that, I mean, the old adage that sometimes it's easier to ask for forgiveness than permission, so if we leave something open-ended, then somebody in that position is likely to offer anything and everything to try to get something done, and then, and then turn around and say, well, you know, I bring you this, and you don't approve it, so, yeah.
Your Honor, I agree with the gentleman before you. We need a guideline, this is going to be a living, this is going to be a living product. We're going to build a TIF policy that, with an exceptional economic developer coming in, they're going to tweak it, and they're going to ask for our blessings. So, I believe that this is a living document.
So, whoever we hire, they have to go along with, I mean, we got to hope they go along with the housing thing of 12 or none, you know, that's, we've got to look at, that's what...
Secondly, I've not seen one TIF program that this, and I missed the one over there at the Flower Mill, but I've never seen a but-if from Baker Tilly show the honest truth. We've had some TIF programs that were absolutely not what-if.
One thing about that Flower Mill, just, you know, he was very, he didn't need it, I don't think, but he wanted to make it work, you know, so that's why he'd used it, I mean, that was part of the...
Yeah, I'm not speaking of that, there's other ones that, Baker Tilly can make the numbers say anything. Bill and I know that, we can make the numbers say anything.
Oh, boy.
And to follow up Mr. Mortensen, if I'm worth $50 million, I'm going to start an LLC and establish this new project with a net worth of a dollar. I'm not going to expose my net worth. So, when we look at these programs, we got to look past the actual entity that's doing it, we got to look at the investors. I just don't believe Baker Tilly's what-if formula is in the past.
And that's a perfect example of what happened with the Sunset Apartments, when you tried to form two LLCs within two weeks.
So, I mean, do we have a consensus on a number that we put in a policy?
Are you talking housing, Your Honor?
Yeah. Yeah, because, I mean, I don't think the other ones, there's no discussion on the other ones, I don't think.
Wow.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, if we're going to say zero, let's put zero in the...
We don't raise hands very often, I don't think, but it'd be nice to know if it's a 5 to 3 for housing, if it is, then the 3 has to come up with something to work with the 5.
Yeah.
I was just going to say, we don't, if we don't have unanimous, nobody's going to come here, because they're not going to fight you, fight us.
No.
They don't want to listen to it, they don't, they want to come here and just say, this is what we want to do.
Yeah.
And so...
I appreciate it, Mr. Raisles, but who's come, like you've indicated?
Nobody's came yet.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying, that's...
But do we have, do we have five that want to see housing TIF?
On some level, just no number, just some level to do housing TIF?
Yeah, I think we do.
I vote no.
I mean, I would say that we have to have that as an option.
I think an example that's recent is the one that was proposed, the most recent one, for the Stanton Avenue, that included an affordable housing component. We wouldn't even see that being proposed if it wasn't for the TIF. So, I think we need it. I think 15 years is a reasonable number.
One thing about, too, just to touch back, when Alexandria, I know, they started their TIF thing a long time ago, and they have ones falling off now, and so, there's, coming off, and they got to add another one, so that they're growing, but it's, you know, it's, they did it differently.
I mean, basically, we have kind of a, I mean, a 15-year max that goes in without a variance?
I'd like to see less than that, I'd like to see 12, like I said, I'm extending an olive branch at 12, from us, from my opinion. Why do we have to be more than Alexandria? They're at 13, why can't we be one of them?
One was 13, they had 20 years.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, but for housing, it's 13.
The most recent one was 13.
That's negotiable.
Yeah, well, we had a million years the last time, it seemed like.
And then, the property down at Stanton, let's remember, we're going to give, what, $3 million away to this guy over the loss of total real estate taxes?
I think that's history, we're trying to define a policy and a guideline, so either we want to do that, or we want to talk about a past, I mean, it's done, it's dead.
I understand that, but maybe it's got to be subject to the guy's financials. I mean, put some real numbers to this what-if.
Ally's proposing 12.
But...
We're bartering here.
You know what, I'll, go ahead, Mr. Layton, ready done?
I'm sorry, Your Honor, but in addition to the TIF, then we, the city, had to go in and do all the roads and sewer and water. Where's the money going to come from? I mean, there's two edges to this sort.
Your Honor, I would, I would go with a 12-year on housing, if it's an apartment complex, no matter what the size, with no transfer of the TIF upon sale, and a thorough looking through or review of the financials at this point, that would give our economic development person to say, hey, I know that the council will do up to 12, they're going to thoroughly look at you, but you should know that if you're looking to do your cap out at nine years, eight years, and sell, that could be an issue for you. I would, I would go with that for today.
I don't think you would be the same on single, I mean, single house... And I think it would be the same on single, I mean, single housing too. So, not just apartments, you know. I mean, because equally, it would be good to have singular homes built too.
So one thing that Kyle and I were talking about earlier, actually, and this kind of goes to something that Mr. Layton was just mentioning about the roads and the streets, the, the infrastructure that's going in before your housing development or, or whatever else. We are using TIF in a different district in town to cover that infrastructure upfront. And that is still a, a benefit to the housing district overall because the developer is not the one who's having to front some of those upfront costs. The TIF is coming back in and then paying for those infrastructure, infrastructure expenses. So that is something to consider when projects are in front of you is, could we just be using the TIF to help with the infrastructure? Does that get the developers still where they need to be? Just something to think about.
Good point.
As opposed to directly to the housing.
How are we handling, if we're, if that's what we're landing at, how are we handling the interest question and the administrative fees question?
A side note on the administrative fees, the 10% that's in there by max, we've done both 5 and 10% over the years. And state statute is you have to have documented. So we don't get to just keep the 10%. We do retain it and then we charge actual time, life for administering the district. And then if we don't spend it all, at the end, when it's decertified, we return it to the county and then we get our portion back through that. So we don't get to just keep the 10%. That has to be documented costs. The 2,000 admin fee and the, the 15,000, that covers, you know, actual costs. But yeah, the 10% isn't, we don't get to just keep that.
Right. So just to wrap up, is everybody good with a $2,000 application fee and a $15,000 escrow deposit?
What was it before? It's always been that?
It's been that for quite a long time. Many years ago, it was 7,500, but costs of developing TIF plans have gone up so much that we had to raise it because we were billing back the developers and now we're just saying, we got to get it upfront so we don't send you a bill in three months.
Is it high enough at that?
I was going to say, is it enough?
It's been okay. The, the one housing, single-family housing development was much more complicated. We've had to bill extra over and above that. But the others, we've come in close, I think.
So maybe it should go up.
Do we do 20,000?
Some of the admin fee to pay for some of those costs too, so we could be charging it.
Yeah.
I mean, do we do three grand and 20? I mean, our, if we haven't moved it, our employee cost has gone up two. I mean.
Yeah, and we're, yeah, the two grand is to cover in-house. The 15,000 is to cover-
The likes of Baker Tilly.
You know, the professional services, getting that done and the legal fees.
I guess I would propose three and 20 then.
Anybody have any heartburn on that? I mean, this is all going to come back when it's written again, so, but it's more trying to get something that is in general agreement. So we'll move those fees up.
Last thing, Your Honor, are you going to require a percentage of the developer's own equity in the project with housing?
Well, I mean, I think we're saying 20%.
Saying 20, housing in the same way or?
I would say 20% on all projects.
Okay.
Hard dollars.
Yeah, real dollars, yeah. If not, I think thank you for the discussion.